Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have roll call, please, Ashley.
Councilwoman Crowe?
Yes.
Sophie? Miller? Phillipsen?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to citizens comments, if anybody would like to approach the council, I guess now would be a good time, seeing none. We'll move on, we have no public hearings, we will have reading and approval of the one ten twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the regular meeting minutes for January tenth.
I will second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose same side? Carried. And then we have the condensed version of the minutes for the paper from January tenth. And I will move approval of the condensed meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose same side? Carried. Alright, we will move on to the consent agenda, which, uh, wait, actually before we do that, we have to add an item, uh, I should have done that actually a little bit earlier, but, uh, we have to add an item E. That is a raffle permit for the Morris area gymnastics. So that's item E. Alright, so now we have the, uh, consent agenda, which, uh, consists of the audit of city bills, gambling report, the Hudson Inn premises permit for the lawful purposes gambling, and the library board minutes, and of course, the added raffle permit for the Morris area gymnastics. I'll prove, I'll approve the items on the consent, consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose same side? Carried. Alright, uh, we have no petitions, requests, and communications. So we will move on to the ordinances and resolutions. Uh, the first one, we actually have two, but we'll take them one at a time. Uh, the first resolution is authorizing an inter-fund loan transfer.
Yeah, and what, what these are, uh, you've been around, Zach's new to this, but, uh, what we have to do is we have to balance up our funds and, and at the end of the year, we're, we're making sure everything is balanced and, and then, uh, the auditors will be happy when they come in. We actually have funds that are gonna be coming in to replace this money that, that, uh, we're moving into here, so then at some point, we'll move the money back out to the capital outlay fund, but, that is the fund that we use, the airport runway extension project is done. Pretty much, we're just doing the closeout of all the paperwork and everything. Uh, and then we get our money, there, there, just one quick note. When, when projects get to the end, the state withholds money until everything is closed out, so I know Whitney's been doing a lot of work trying to get them to get all their paperwork done, get it closed out, so they, it's like, uh, a contingency amount or, or, uh, sometimes in our contracts, we withhold money until the contract's done, and then we pay the contractor the final amount, but, uh, that's all this is, is just balancing the funds at the end of the year, and then, uh, the money will go back in when we get paid.
Yeah, I mean, that was gonna be my question, it's, you're moving money from one bucket to a different bucket, more or less?
Yeah, so we always have to make sure, especially at the end of the year, that our funds are not in the red. And, and that's part of the reason why we have some reserves laying around, and, you know, part of the discussion that we have when we do some of these projects where, uh, we have to front some money, uh, especially big projects, the state's actually pretty good about getting us the money when we need it. It's just that, at the end of the year, there, it's kind of a catch point that we have to deal with.
Okay.
Well, I'll move on that resolution authorizing the inter-fund loan from the runway extension of three fifty from the capital outlay to the airport runway extension.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we will have roll call, vote on that resolution, please, Ashley.
Councilwoman Crowe?
Yes.
Sophie? Miller? Phillipsen?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Alright, now we have the second resolution.
And this is for the, the May storm that we've been working on, we've actually got a little bit of money out of FEMA already, so the initial, um, administrative kind of stuff that we did, uh, we, we've got money for, and actually, all the, all the information, pretty much, I don't, I think we're waiting on the airport garage door to, to be, and then the generator out at the wastewater plant, so our insurance covers some stuff, what doesn't get covered, FEMA will cover some stuff, and so there's a couple items left, but, um, we haven't got all of our FEMA money yet, that'll be coming in hopefully shortly. And it's the same thing, we're just balancing out that count, we actually set up a separate fund to keep track of all the expenses for that storm that happened, and, uh, and then we'll put the money back in when we get paid from FEMA.
How much are you expecting out of FEMA?
What we have left to be paid from FEMA, you know, it's a very rough estimate, and then they have to approve it all, but what I submitted for all trees, well, our trees in Holly was just right around a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So they have to come back and prove in order for us to get that, but it was pretty promising, and then there'll just be some, maybe twenty-five thousand more just from airport fit-ups that insurance won't cover and such, but it just takes a long time, the whole process, so.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
And our insurance, we still have money that needs to be coming from them to ever finishing work.
So this fifty-five is not a final tally by any means, okay?
No, just to make sure that our cash isn't negative at year-end.
Okay.
Do you have a rough timeline, I realize that's a, that's a difficult question?
I do not, no, it just depends, we've been waiting on Ziegler for a long time, the wastewater generator.
Sure.
Insurance wants to make sure they've done everything possible, make sure there's no replacement parts before they pay eighty thousand for a new one. So, I hope, I really wanna get it wrapped up, I was trying to push hard before year-end, but it didn't happen, so. Hopefully, before the first half of this year, we'll get it all lined up.
Yeah, and, you know, the one thing with the insurance is everybody got hit. I mean, that's, it's, I, I don't know how the league did it, you know, 'cause it, everybody got hit, so there's this massive, it's just like Otter Tail. It wasn't one city that got hit, it's like all their cities just about got hit, and, um, but it's, you know, it's one of those things where we don't deal with FEMA very often, the, the person working on our stuff is very good, he's actually one of the, the leaders. So he stepped back in to work on ours, and so he knows and understands everything that needs to be done, and, and it's just, sometimes there's one or two items, the supply chain issues kinda got involved with this too, 'cause, you know, you actually can't get a new generator for probably a year or more than that, just because of the way everything works.
Individed contractors, so many people were backed out for work for a long time, 'cause everybody's needing help, so.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for the info. So we have the, the resolution before us, authorizing inter-fund loan transfer in the amount of fifty-five thousand from capital outlay to the twenty-twenty-two storm fund, and I will approve that resolution, I'll move on that resolution, I guess.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call, vote, please, Ashley.
Councilwoman Solvi? Crowe?
Yes.
Phillipsen?
Yes.
Miller? Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay. Next up, resolution authorizing the submission of the twenty-twenty-three pay equity report. Blaine, you maybe wanna shed a little light?
Yeah, so this is, it's a requirement of the state of Minnesota, and, and what it is, is it's a report that, and we've been doing these for years and years and years and years, like, I remember when it first came out, but every three years, we're required to report to the state of Minnesota what our wages were at the end of the year, uh, and when, the way we report it is, we, we literally, I literally go online to their, uh, website, to their program, and I load the data into their program. And the data does all the calculations, the program does all the calculations on our data. This report is simply a report to the state of Minnesota that forces us to compare female-dominated jobs with other classes of dominated jobs in the city to determine if female jobs are being consistently underpaid compared to other jobs. That's the way, that's, that's what this thing does. So it doesn't, you don't have to do anything else except load your data in, it'll do the calculation, and as long as the calculations come out um, appropriately, then, then you're okay, and then three years later, you have to do it again, we've always been in compliance. And, uh, that's when I, when I do wage negotiations, one of the things I, I talk about is that if you consistently move everybody up the pay scale, then everything stays in place with regards to pay equity, 'cause it's just the way it works, 'cause if you're in compliance now, you move everything up at the same, same percentage, but it's a mathematical formula, and it's not, it's not straight looking at everybody all at once, that, actually, I went through the training on this, and they bracket it, and they go up and down, up and down, up and down, and up and down, and they're constantly comparing. So, the end result of that program is information that I've actually put it in this memo, so we have nine male-dominated job classes, seventeen employees, eight female-dominated job classes, twelve employees, three balanced job classes with seventeen employees, and, and you can see the total. And the one thing with this one is its wages as of the December thirty-first. Uh, we no longer have a police department. So we no longer have a chief, we no longer have a sergeant, we no longer have specialists, we no longer have police officers, we no longer have a police admin position. So we actually lost five job classifications within this report, uh, from the last time that we reported, but, um, when I ran the report, we're in compliance, everything looks good, and then you can print out uh, some additional information that comes with it, you can see what the en- entry data was for all the positions that we have. And, uh, and then they also provide you with a predicted pay report. You should have in here, which you don't have to do anything with it, all it does is it talks about what predicted pay would be. But if you, if you just take a quick glance at it, what you're gonna see is that, you know, there's some positions that are, for instance, the city manager's underpaid. Uh, I'm not underpaid, if, if we look at salaries and things like that compared to other cities and how we do stuff, uh, which is what I do when I do union negotiations and things like that, we compare other cities, positions, police, uh, whatever it is, you know, we compare them, and that's, that's what we use, this, this just looks at, through their mathematical calculations, uh, they, they look at how things are underpaid, and one of the things that pops into here is transit drivers are, are considered overpaid. It's a, a female, uh, it's actually balanced now, because we do have a couple male drivers, but, um, and then sometimes on the lower end, positions are considered, uh, uh, underpaid, they're considered overpaid. Uh, but that's what they do, so it's, it's complicated, it's a requirement, everybody has to do it, all the cities have to do it, but it doesn't, it doesn't really translate into any kind of adjustments when you're moving into negotiations, stuff like that.
How would you know if you were out of compliance?
Uh, it would, it would tell you, it would tell you.
That, I mean, it would just tell you? I mean, there's no way to, like, to look at this report, uh, other than if it'd tell you and go, oh.
Yeah, so if you look at the compliance report, um, which is on like, so it says, compliance report, if you go down and look at the statistical analysis, uh, if that came out to be like sixty-five or whatever, um, then we would be out of compliance. Uh, 'cause it, it talks about, you have to be over eighty percent, and we're at a hundred and fifty-five percent. Um, but they would tell you, you would be able to figure it out just by going through here and looking at it, and I would.
That's what I meant, if you put, if you looked at it, could you tell, or they have to tell?
Yep, no, I, I would be able to tell, and so then, so then ultimately, the question is, if you're out of compliance, what would you have to do? Well, you would either have to underpay a male-dominated position, or you'd have to, uh, uh, increase the pay on a, a, a underpaid female-dominated position. Which, uh, I've never, ever had to do that, that I, I know of cities that have, though. You know, and, and, uh, a lot of times, it's because they're giving certain people more money, and they're giving other people nothing. You know, and, and that's, and that's com- it's, it's common in some places where they don't wanna pay pe- certain people and stuff like that, and that's why this whole thing came into being, is because certain places were underpaying, and, and, uh, if, if you're out of compliance, they would notify you right away, uh, and then you'd have a certain period of time to get yourself back into compliance, but.
And the reasoning for the male-dominated versus female is, has only to do with the numbers of females and males working in there, not actually what type of job it is? Just how many females, yeah, are working in that position?
Yep.
That type, okay?
Yeah, so theoretically, that could change city to city depending on what you have, yeah. Um, for your job points on your table there, does that factor in at all? Like, for example, the first one there, liquor store clerk has a job, uh, points of one-twenty, does that factor into any of your statistical analysis, or no?
I think it, in theirs, it does.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's part of their mathematical comparisons. And then we have certain positions that have steps, like, you know, the county might have all the positions, might have steps, but, uh, in the unions, we have steps, in the non-union, we don't have steps. And so then, that, that is entered different i- in, in this program that, that they run.
Who are the non-union members, what class title?
So it'd be like myself and, and.
Administrative?
Admin, administrative people, and then like Stacy Molegard, since she's considered, uh, um, a position that, uh, deals with classified, or not classified, but, uh, what's the?
All supervisors.
So I'll.
She's confidential.
Confidential. I've been watching the news too much about classified stuff. But confidential, so, and, and then, actually, we had one in the police department that was confidential too. Uh, um, when, when, uh, when that report was done before.
I think, yeah, it's.
So that's it, and we have to, we have to post this information in all the workspaces, so everybody will get a chance to see it, and, and, uh, um, every once in a while, you might have a question about it, that comes up, but, but it does, you know, I, I do bring this up when we're doing union negotiations, 'cause it's important to understand, and potentially, if I'm, if I'm negotiating union wages, I could load data into the system, um, 'cause they would let us do that, just to take a look at what it would look like if we raised things, but, like I said, if you're raising everything the same percentage, it just all shifts up. That's, that's what happens.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing that the state does this, it kinda helps.
Yep, so then I would need a resolution to approve it, and then I can submit it to the state.
I'll move on that resolution authorizing the submission of the twenty-twenty-three pay equity report.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that resolution, we will have roll call, vote, please, Ashley.
Councilwoman Miller? Phillipsen?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Solvi? Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay, we will move on to the next resolution, which is authorizing the purchase of an auxiliary diesel heater for an electric transit bus.
So I've always said that it wasn't gonna cost us a dime for this electric tran- transit bus, and, and the one thing I will tell you is that, um, this is probably one of the most complicated things I've ever worked on. And it's, it's just, it's just really, and the reason for that is 'cause it's a federal grant that the state of Minnesota got for, uh, electric tran- and, and one of the things I want you to keep in mind is everything I'm talking about here right now also affects Arrowhead Transit, 'cause they're gonna get one too, and they've already agreed to do the same thing that we're doing, but, uh, it's electric transit bus, so as this worked its way down through the state system, the state of Minnesota, uh, cooperative purchasing system through the state of Minnesota Transit System, which Whitney knows is very complicated, they're, they're really kinda anal-retentive about everything that they do. What happened was, they, the whole concept of it being electric, uh, got, got really embedded in everything that they're doing, and they even hired a, a contractor to put together the plans and specifications for this transit bus. Uh, but it never really got incorporated into the actual cooperative purchasing uh, format that they had for finding these buses that we could pick from to buy uh, off of the co- cooperative purchase system, and, and so then, actually, the bus that was originally selected to be able to buy uh, came out of California, and they refused to do this, 'cause it's an electric bus. Uh, and, and the next company, United, which is out of Big Lake, uh, they said, yeah, we can do that, and just as the side note, both school buses at the school have these diesel heaters. 'Cause we know and understand, from everything that we've learned, that about all these electric vehicles and everything, is that in cold weather climate, uh, you can't rely on the electric heater in these vehicles. Um, they will heat, you'll be warm, but it'll eat up battery really fast, and so the best way to, to make the, the school buses more useful is to have a diesel heater, they're very simple little diesel heaters, and, and, uh, they, they wouldn't allow them in the state contract. They just, because everything had already been put together, and they weren't gonna open it back up, and they wanted to get it all done, and the grant that, from the federal government, has to be completed by the end of February, as far as the, the purchase of the bus, and the state wanted it done, actually, by the end of December, and now it's the end of January, and so to make a long story sh- stop, we have to have, uh, this diesel heater, and it actually was not designed in this bus that we're gonna get. So part of this eighteen thousand dollar cost is designing and putting into this bus, this diesel heater, that's gonna make that bus useful to us. Um, you're talking about a quarter million dollar electric transit bus that we're gonna get for free, that is an extra bus beyond our normal allotment of buses that we get in transit, and we just have to pay for this. And so I'm asking you to approve paying for this, so we can get it all ordered, but then I'm gonna go back to the state and try to figure out if there's another way that they can try to get some money to us to reimburse us for that. We do know that we have some excess transit funding, uh, that we accumulated through a couple different places, uh, over the period where COVID, we had COVID, and we, uh, we got a lot of free stuff, uh, so we're able to build up a little bit of reserve, so we can use that money for that, or we would use capital outlay reserve for that, but, uh, when it, when it's all said and done, the other thing that's very important is that we were selected in Morris because we're the innovators, we're the, the leaders in trying to look at all this stuff. It's not just a bus that we're buying that's gonna be put into our transit system, it's gonna be an electric bus in a cold weather climate that we're gonna bring into our system, test it, figure out how it works and stuff, and then put that information back into the state of Minnesota, 'cause they are transitioning towards electric vehicles. Uh, that is one of the things I guarantee you out of this legislative session, that there's gonna be more, more to that, and ironically, we are trading a couple emails, the design that, that we're gonna get, the final design out of this United bus is, is gonna be the design that'll move forward for any other buses that wind up coming out of the state cooperative bidding, so the next ones will probably be paid for. They just didn't, they didn't have the time to, they're very, they're very, once they put something into writing, they do not change it. And that, and that's, we kinda got stuck with that, so.
The only thing I was confused, uh, about was I thought in that last bid that we received, it, it had, the heater was actually included in there. And that's why I was.
Yeah, no, it was, it wasn't, so then the last resolution you did, you actually did a resolution that allowed us to buy a bus up to the amount of the, uh, uh, grant. And actually, the bus, the grant was like two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars, and the actual bus itself is only gonna be about two-hundred-and-fifty-eight
Okay.
thousand dollars, because it's a different company and, and, but it actually, I know I'm getting into a lot of detail, but the one out of California, actually, they were gonna put in a smaller battery, and we said, well, that's not gonna work very good for us. That's the way, we, supply-wise, that's all we can get, well, this other company could get the actual battery that we wanted, and some of the other stuff, so.
Oh, I think it's still a good deal for, for us, no question about it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm recommending to you, is it's a good deal, but I'm not done trying to shake the tree.
So it's hard too, when you're just, for the first time, working on this and that, you know, I mean, so in the future, would it be something that you could, if, if there's another grant out there, could you incorporate it into it, or because it's, needs an auxiliary diesel, there's never gonna be an electric bus that has that come with grant money, I mean.
Oh, the next one will, in the state, yeah.
Just 'cause they.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Just because they realize that you actually.
Just because now, now they know, and, and we're the ones, we're the ones that made them aware of that. You know, and, and it's like, and we told them that in the beginning, but what happens is, they already have their stuff the way they did it. And so then, you know, that's what I'm, I'm going back to them, and it's like, well, your, your actual consultants told you that's what this is gonna need. You know, but they, they didn't put everything together, it was, it was really kinda weird how everything worked on that, and, and, uh.
Yeah, maybe there'll be some extra money somewhere that they can reimburse too.
Is there, obviously, you passed a resolution at the previous meeting, that only covers the bus, we can't use any of that potential access for?
Nope.
No? Need a separate resolution for that?
Right, they, they, this, they split it, and, and, uh, it's just the way they do business, once they do a contract, you know, within their system, you know, it's just like with the transit bus garage. We got a grant for doing what we're gonna do, and then right at the end, they're like, hey, you know, are you ever gonna expand this thing, and it's like, well, we might, well, why don't you ask for some additional bays? And it's like, okay, but we can't put them in the same grant. So we have to have two grants, and so they did two grants, and then they like had a system where they got to finally morph the two grants into one, but it took, like, I don't know how they get it.
And I think, if you don't, I mean, if I'm understanding what you're asking, you know, if we have thirty thousand left in the grant that we're not gonna spend, they won't let us use those funds for.
For something else, yeah.
For the bus only, and then it goes back into their pot of funds.
Yep, yeah, that's what I was getting at, was.
It's a good question.
Yeah, very good question. So that's where we're at with that one.
Do they know, uh, obviously, this question is gonna get into the weeds a little bit, but they, do they know anything about environmental impact on these, I, they're small heaters, I get that, but.
Yeah, there's hardly any, yeah, they've, they've already vetted them out.
Okay.
Uh, the bus company that, that did the school buses is out of Canada, so they already knew the answer to the cold weather. So they were incorporated into their design, but they're very, they don't use hardly any, you know, you think of a diesel heater, it's just a little, it's like a fish house heater.
I saw it on the, I saw it on the school buses, it's pretty impressive, really. Alright, any more discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will move on that resolution authorizing the purchase of an auxiliary diesel heater for an electric transit bus.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call, vote on that resolution, Ashley, please.
Councilwoman Phillipsen?
Yes.
Miller? Solvi? Crowe?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay. Next resolution on, uh, the list here is the resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with TK, TKDA engineering for the airport apron. Engineering for the Airport Apron Reconstruction.
Yeah, so this is just the uh the agreement for their their services to put together this project for uh. The Airport Apron Reconstruction Expansion. So uh this is the uh and then the the actual. The quirky part about this is that before we could get a a cost from our own engineers on what it would be to do this. We're required to go out to another engineer and get a cost from them. And so then I was the only one allowed to see him. And then once I got there, I got uh and and they're all, they're all gonna be right about the same price. Because they all, they all, they know what they charge. They, this is not an uncommon thing, so. And then this, then they'll design and put together the plans and specs and everything for this uh uh apron project. So we're just looking for a resolution to approve the agreement with them.
Is there, I can't remember, is there funding for this or?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought with that kind of price tag.
Yeah.
For the majority of it or?
Uh for the majority, we're gonna have some local share on this one. But it's the, it's like the first one that we had to have a local share on. Everything else was the the uh. The parallel taxiway, the runway extension was all a hundred percent paid for and so there's gonna be um. I I didn't go back and look and see what the estimated cost of this was gonna be, but but you'll get that before they do any further work on that.
So this is just a solicited bid, more or less?
This is to do the design engineering, to do the plans and specifications and then to do the actual construction engineering. Once they get a contractor to come in.
Okay, any further discussion on that resolution?
I'll move on that resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with TKDA Engineering for the Airport Apron Reconstruction. And Expansion Project.
And I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will have roll call vote on that resolution, Ashley.
Home member Crowe?
Yes.
Solvi? Miller? Deloxin?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. And last but not least, we have a resolution accepting a bid for the AWOS. Project, that's the weather system.
Yeah, the Automated Weather Observing System. Um as they were doing the runway. Um extension and finishing all that up, the question came up of whether or not. Now would be the time to replace this automated weather observing system. Actually, pilots have mentioned that. There were some issues with this uh system that we had and so this is actually the second project that we would have a local share on. Uh but um it needs to be done. It's an old system and and. They put together a state and all of these, so the Apron Project, the the runway extension. This project, they they're all grant contracts. And so it gets really confusing keeping track of all these grants, but this is a grant. Uh contract that we have with the state of Minnesota and Neo Electric uh is the low bidder. Uh on that, the estimate was seventy-five thousand dollars. It was higher than that, but that's no surprise given. What's going on with the costs and in the markets and and uh supply chain issues and all that kind of stuff. So I'm recommending that we accept it and then uh we'll get that work done.
Boy, quite a difference between the first and the third one.
Well, what happens with these and you know, the other thing is that. Um and you've been around for this discussion, Zach hasn't been around for it, but uh. When you do these state and federal projects, um the 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 contracts that you have to enter into are. Really, really, really difficult. And so a lot of local people probably wouldn't even put in a bid on it. And so, but you do have companies that that truly want to work and they're gonna give you a fairly decent bid and you have other companies that literally you go. Well, just throw a number out there and see if, see if we happen to get it. You know, and and you might get one of these companies and they might turn around and go, oh, well, we didn't think we'd get it. We we probably aren't gonna be able to do it because I've seen that happen before too, but. Yeah, it's not uncommon to see some really unique bids.
And you do have a breakout of the local share on that one, I see twenty-six thousand something.
Yeah, and we've seen that on our, even our construction bids, you know, for roadwork where. You know, one will be two million dollars and the next one's three million dollars and it's like they're just trying to make money. Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on that resolution?
So really they're just coming in to update the system more or less, correct?
They're gonna put in a brand new one is what they're doing.
Okay.
And then uh one of, one of the things that we had, they noticed that they needed a new uh. So this is already done, but uh the Rural Electric Company actually ran a new service line out to the site. Because they noticed that the line that was there was probably not the best line. Every once in a while you get into these and it's like this has to be done and that has to be done, but. Yeah, so it'll be a brand new, fully functional automated weather system. All the pilots will be really happy with it.
So is this, what does this actually do?
It gives them weather information.
The pilots that are flying in or?
Yep, yep.
Okay, flying in, flying out?
Flying in, flying out, yeah, it's uh.
And so the one that we have currently doesn't do that?
It's an old, it's an older one and and was having some issues and needed, you know, they'd have to come out and maintain it and. We we didn't bring it up. They, the FAA brought it up and said, you realize you have a problem with your automated weather system. It's like, I'm not a pilot. You know, I I I don't know what's going on with it, but uh now's now's the time to do it, you know, and part of it was. We wanted to do it when everything is kind of torn up a little bit, you know, so now they're just finishing up stuff, but then. You you know, we ran into some supply chain problems with that and and uh it'll all get done the right way.
Do you have, I assume this is them coming out, doing it all in one shot. There's no multiple mobilizations. Do you have a timeline of what that? What that looks like?
No, that'll be the next, you know, the first step is to accept the bid and then the next step would be we we do a um. You know, a a meeting with the contractor to sit down and talk about, you know, what's what's gonna happen uh with it. And and then they would establish kind of what the timeline is gonna be as far as them coming in.
Well, I, you know, weather is an obviously a pretty important part of flying, so if we can do anything to help. Uh our our pilots in the air, I think it's a good thing, so. Any more discussion on that resolution? Hearing none. I will move on that resolution, accepting a bid for the AWOS Project.
One second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote on that resolution, Ashley, please.
Home member Miller? Crowe?
Yes.
Solvi? Deloxin?
Yep.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay, well, we will move on to the City Manager's Newsletter.
Yeah, um you have an informational item underneath the uh um. The, on the bottom of the agenda, um and I'll talk about that in a minute, in a minute, but at the last meeting. Uh we were missing the library board on the list of ex-officials. And so the next day after that meeting, I went back and it's like, well, that's kind of odd, you know, and I knew that the library had some, some additional. Uh legal authority uh than other, other boards and commissions in in Morrison and then. Actually, I did a check of all of our codes and there is no ex-officio for the library. But the library board can have up to two members of the city council on the board. But they would be full members of the board. And so then what I identified, I went back and looked at all of our code. And um I I I think it's a discussion that we need to have as to how we wanna have boards and commissions. Represented by the city council and then do an ordinance to set it up the same way for all of them if we wanna do. There's a couple of them that are a little bit quirkier, like the airport's got the county part of it, so there's county commissioner on it, but uh. But that's what I found out. That's, you know, we didn't actually have to appoint an official for that one, so. I I'm suggesting that maybe that be a work session item that we can talk about. Or I can draw up my thoughts on it and bring it back to the city council at a later point. And then um we got a call from Moody's and they wanted to talk to us about our bond rating and that's never usually a good thing. And when Moody's Rating Service calls you, but they changed the way they rated um communities, cities. And they added information about the city that went beyond just the normal information that they looked at with regards to the city and and in. In the end, what they did was they they up bumped up our rating, so if you think of, you know, your credit score being. Six hundred and the credit rating company came to you and said, hey, we wanna look at your rating. Because there's some other information we haven't looked at yet. And then when they're done, they bumped it up to nine hundred. So that's what they did is they looked at the city of Morris and and Whitney and I met with them. Uh in a Zoom meeting and and talked about the things that were going on in Morrison. Really what it comes down to is. The stability of the government, the financial position the government's in, but the stability of the community. Uh and and some people might think that the community is not stable, but it is very stable economically. Uh and there's telltale signs of that and and even things like um, you know, what happens with the farmers around us. Because that's part of our community and 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 those kind of things. So they take all that into consideration. When they're looking at, you know, what kind of shape we're in with regards to recommending to somebody that they borrow us money. And so they bumped it up, so that that was, that was good news for us. Uh how much does that mean in a interest rate if we're gonna borrow money? Uh you know, it it's hard to say, but it's gonna be better than if we had our old ratings, so. And I've never seen this happen ever in my career. Usually you worry about them downgrading you when you're getting ready. And when we sell bonds, uh normally we have to get rated by them. And I don't know if, if you remember Whitney, if it affected any of the bonds that we had. You know, I don't think it does, but Ellers was talking about that because our 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 financial consultant was with us during during this meeting, so. So there's that and um the grant for the ladder truck went in to FEMA. Uh uh we uh we, if you remember, we hired a grant writer to write a grant for us to apply for a ladder truck and. And what'll happen is we'll hear back from FEMA if they're interested in in giving us a grant. And they'll probably meet with us and sit down and talk about it and then we'll find out more about it. It could be that there's gonna be a local share to that, but you know, right now we're facing the possibility of spending a million and a half. Dollars on a new ladder truck or trying to find a good used ladder truck or whatever, but uh you know, if we wind up paying ten percent on. On a one point five million dollar ladder truck, it's gonna be a good, good deal for us, so we'll kind of wait and see what happens. At some point, we wanna sit down and talk to you about what uh Blue Horizon Energy has found out about potential solar. Uh rays for the water treatment plant and the sewer plant. Because we've got some updated information about that that we wanna present to the city council and look at. Any questions from from me?
Oh, but I'd just like to say that I think that the discussion at a work session on the board and commissions should happen sooner than later.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, they're all run a little differently and I don't know, it'd be nice to get it all under the same. How they all are run the same. And then.
Here's your role, here's your position, this is your.
And including for the, for the members, because I mean, everybody's giving up their time and.
Right.
Kind of wanna make sure that they're all.
Well, yeah, because it, it is odd when you go back, when you go and look and it's like. Did they not do this all at the same time? You know, because it's just.
Well, it's never been discussed since I've been on here. And that's where it's kind of started. It's just like, here's what you get because the other person had it. It's like, well, what is my role in there? It's like, um.
Right.
Go and fight. So um so I think, yeah, I don't know if that was on for this Tuesday's work session at all or no?
Well, you you can talk about what you.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that next, Ashley, but you know, I, Kim, I think what I would suggest is uh kind of what Blaine had tossed out there that. You could just draw up an ordinance and bring it back to us. I don't know if we need to really commit an entire work session to that.
I wouldn't think the entire work session, but at least a discussion, maybe a half hour about how this looks.
But we could talk about when you brings the ordinance forward too. I mean, that's just another option.
Yeah, you can do it in a council, council meeting, but.
If you brought it back in the form of an ordinance and then these two guys hopefully will be here and then we can, we can chat, because. I, you know, I don't know that it, an ordinance really would just kind of. Put things back, kind of just line things up with the way we've been doing it too, right, Blainer?
Right, and and just really quick, you know, the way ordinances work and actually in the past, we've done what I considered maintenance ordinances. Where there are, there are some things that we have in a stack that at some point, if we're gonna do a maintenance ordinance, we'd wanna get something changed. And it could be as simple as the word we use here is not the right word anymore or whatever it is. A good example too, I'm working with Aaron Jordan right now, is that the the word police and police department. You know, is everywhere in our ordinances and and the idea that we should change that. Uh um but we could make it a simple, simpler like law enforcement. That way you always leave open the option of still having a police department if you wanted to. Or contracting for it. Uh the one other thing I would just share with you, uh because we haven't done it for a while is. Um and I've been through these before and I haven't reached out to any companies yet, but there's a process called codification. So you actually hire a company, come in and they specialize in looking at your ordinance. And they will go through everything and they'll, number one, make sure it's not illegal. Because there's something in our ordinances that the laws have changed and, you know, a good example in the planning commission is that um. Now we have to give notice to three hundred and fifty feet instead of three hundred. So I just changed it in in the language in the one that I work with. So that we're making sure we do it right, but um the other thing they they do is they'll give you the common sense discussion about. Well, do you really wanna do things this way? Because that's not normally how uh things are done. And then they'll reach out and they'll talk to you. So so we, the last time it was done was in the nineties. I think the ordinances we're working off right now were codified back in the nineties. And so that great big huge book. Was the end result of that, that process. And so we probably need to do that again, but. But at the same time, we can, we can throw an ordinance on the table and you've been around for ordinances. You have your first reading. The next meeting, you have open discussion with the public and see if anybody's got any comments on it. Otherwise you approve it and then you publish it and then you change your codes. That's as, I mean, you can do it very simply that way. Uh but but there should be some discussion on how you wanna see things run and then make them consistent.
Do you think that would get the job done, Kevin? I guess I, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking the discussion should come before the.
Drawing up an ordinance.
The drawing up an ordinance.
We have some sort of like, here's what we want it to look like and then we can present the ordinance and.
All right.
Because, because otherwise it's just, okay, we're just gonna, yeah, anyway, I'd like to have a discussion.
Yeah, at that point, potentially the ordinance could get, have to be rewritten, so that way it's a smoother process.
Makes sense. Well, we have.
It doesn't have to be like a lengthy, I mean, even if you come up with an idea.
Could be ten minutes.
Yeah.
And we could really add it to this coming work session, couldn't we, Blain?
Yeah, that's my recommendation is.
Yeah, let's do that.
Next Tuesday, you have one agenda item that would be that. Discuss boards and commissions.
Okay, and we are gonna do the H seven street discussion. We've already kind of, is that part of it as well?
I wanna do that too. I talked to Jeff Coogan before I came here and he will be here if we want him to be here.
That sounds fair enough. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the City Manager's Newsletter before we move on? All right, and uh before we get to the, well, the next, next up is the uh work session agenda items. And of course, our work session is gonna be five fifteen next Tuesday, one thirty, uh January thirty-first. Um right here in Council Chambers, right, Blain?
Yep.
Uh what I, I guess I would like to recommend, guys, is I'm kind of a big believer in the power of threes. If we all come with like, say, three items or three goals, if you will, that you're. Kind of interested in that we could talk about in these work sessions, so we can kind of set an agenda at that time. We each bring our three items and then we can have a discussion and then prioritize. We each bring our three items and then we can have a discussion and then prioritize, uh, the list accordingly, cause we agreed to have four work sessions a year, cause there's the, the four months that fall on the thirty-first, so. We know that if we each bring three ideas, we're gonna have at least fifteen ideas, so. Uh, but, you know, more is better and, you know, who knows, we may duplicate, uh, some of the ideas that I may have, may, you know, cross over some of your ideas, but if we just bring all that, uh, with us, uh, to the next meeting, we can talk about it at that time. Does that make sense?
So bring three ideas of what we'd like to have our work sessions about?
Yep, work sessions. I, I guess they could kind of coincide with goals and things that you'd like to see done too, you know, that, cause really that's what these work sessions are all about. It's trying to accomplish some of the things that we feel kind of strongly about. So what I feel strongly about might be different than what you want or what Zach is thinking. So we all have areas that we.
Just as long as we're flexible enough, because, you know, with four months, I might have a whole different goal if something came up and I'm like, ooh.
Well, we have, I think if, with any goals, I think that has to be kind of part of it. You have to be fluid, so. Okay, and we, do we need to set that date for the work session? Is that, you need a motion?
No, cause you, you.
I think we said it already.
It's already set, isn't it?
You set the fifth Tuesday. And I was just looking at the calendar and it looks like, so then May thirtieth, uh, August twenty-ninth and, and October thirty-first are the Tuesdays.
Okay, and then you'll just.
That would be the fifth ones.
So they're already set then, um?
Yep.
And you'll send us out an agenda then for that?
Yeah, so, so what I'm hearing is Seventh Street, talk about boards and commissions, and then everybody bring three ideas of things you'd like to talk about. And so we'll send them out. And then every, I think, the meeting before that fifth meeting, you can always turn around and set the agenda, so. So if something changes, you get an opportunity to do that. So I would just, I would just say, if I could have a motion to set those agenda items, then, then we know what it is.
Okay, I will make a motion to set the work session agenda items as the Seventh Street project and also, um, discussing and setting boards and commissions.
And then three ideas.
Uh, three ideas, sorry.
Okay. And I will second.
Can, that, can you send that out too in our email, so I can leave my paper in the car and then, I wonder what I was supposed to do again? Thank you.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a, and a second to approve the agenda for the work session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Um, before we close the meeting, I just wanted to back up a little bit. I, I, and I apologize on the consent agenda. I don't, part of being a new mayor, I think I moved, uh, through that a little bit too fast and I, I like to give people, uh, an opportunity to discuss anything on the consent agenda. And I don't know if I gave you ample time to consult, to consider anything on the consent agenda that you might've had a question about. And oddly, I did have a question and I didn't even give myself an opportunity. So I guess, uh, if it's, we already approved the consent agenda, but I did have a, maybe Blaine, you can, uh, just answer a quick question for me on the consent agenda on the line item. Is that, can I?
Yeah, no, you can, yeah.
Uh, well, I was gonna ask a question on line sixty-three. As, as you seen on line sixty-three, that was, must be our first law enforcement, uh, uh, charge that came through, uh, for eighty-three thousand. And that included the, uh, attorney fee and the pictometry charge.
Yep.
Um, is that, I'm assuming that's a monthly cost, right? Seventy-five thousand of that is.
And we've been paying this since September.
Since, since September?
Yep, it's been on the agenda.
And how come I missed that?
Yep.
I just, I didn't, I must've missed the, the other ones, but pictometry, that we did some aerial photos evidently?
Yeah, so we work with the county on, uh, um, and, and I use this all the time. All the time. I, i- it's just a, I, I used it twice today, actually. Uh, but they have a fabulous GIS system and what they're gonna do is they're gonna do, uh, from time to time, some aerial, uh, pictures of, of the county is what they do. And so then part of it is the city. And so we just participate in that. So that we can have some really good up-to-date info. I'm getting ready to do, um, the notices for the vacation. So what I'll do is I'll pull up the county map and, and then draw, draw my three hundred and fifty foot circles around all this property. And eventually they can probably do that for us, but, uh, we work with them on that. That's what, that's what it is.
And that, that was like a four thousand dollar
Yep.
charge. And is that, is each time you use that, there's that fee?
No, they don't charge us anything to use it.
Oh.
Uh, I think they, and then they actually, uh, they made a map for us for, for FEMA. Cause we GIS the, uh, all the damaged tree locations and everything and, and then gave the coordinates and everything to, uh, Caitlin up there and they did a map for us, but.
So we just pay that once a year then?
This is gonna be this year and then we pay it. I think it's gonna be like in three years, they're gonna do another one.
Oh, okay.
It's like a one-time payment.
It's like one time this year.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that was really kind of my question. I just didn't really know how that worked. Okay. Great. Anybody else have anything to who've come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.